I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission of September 28, 2015. This is a regular meeting. The first item on the agenda is public comment. The Planning Commission usually reserves 10 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for public comment. The public may comment on any matter except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. Generally, there's a time limit for public comments of three minutes. However, the Planning Commission reserves the option to either reduce or allow more speaker time depending on the number of people to speak. Now with that, there's a green card to be filled out if you were going to speak. I believe we have some here now. Commissioner Taylor.
Deb, Deb Carey? Come on up, yeah, the head of the table.
Yeah, that's the public area.
Good, good morning.
Good morning.
Could you please state your name and your—
Yes, my name is Deborah Carey. I live at 885 Kelly Lane in Eugene. My statement's very short. I respect and appreciate the work of this commission. I especially appreciate each individual who gives time and energy to participate in furthering the responsiveness and effectiveness of local government on matters involving growth and development within the city. I am here today to thank you for your active citizenship and to encourage each member to maintain this body's well-regarded ethical standards, basing decisions on applicable statewide planning goals and Eugene codes. Thank you again for your service.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Laura Bovilske?
My name is Laura Bovilske and I live at 116 Oakley Lane. And similarly, I'm here on behalf of the neighbors on Oakley and McClure Lanes and we wanted to make all of you aware that many of us wanted to be here and could not be here, and so a bunch of people gave me their names. I just wanted to read them. People who have work obligations that prevent them from attending this meeting. Cecilia Baxter Heinz on McClure, Morgan Bushelman on McClure, Rich Dambrov on Oakley Lane, Lisa Gilman and John Fenn on Oakley Lane, Sean Johnson on Oakley Lane, Jack and Molly Beckworth on McClure, Lisa Chin and Matt Walker on McClure, Terrence Killian on Oakley, Dan Locken on McClure, Dean and Bonnie Nussbaum on McClure, Barbie and Tom Sims on Hawthorne Avenue, Scott Stedman on Oakley, Jesse Thomas on McClure, Sandy Toms on Oakley, Simon Troutman on Oakley, none of whom could be here. And all of us are grateful for your fair and careful consideration of the legal issues having to do with this remand that would permit or constrain this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no others who have submitted a green card, we will move on to item number two, which is our Oakway co-housing remand. I'd like to begin by staying, because sometimes when we have either a conflict or some other issue, it's to be brought into the record. I was not at the meeting on August 17th. However, I did review the video and I've reviewed all the information and the testimony submitted for the record to date. Commissioner Nicolli.
I'd also like to disclose that I was not on the meeting on August 17th, but I have watched the webcast and reviewed the appropriate public record.
Any other commissioners at this time? Okay. All commissioners have received the AIS with City Attorney attachment. At this time, I would like to have the staff sort of review and go over the AIS summary. Mr. Flock.
Sure, I'd like to briefly turn it over to Ann Davies to sort of walk you through what occurred in the open record sequence. As outlined in the agenda item summary, we're recommending that you at least initially take some action with a motion with regard to what you will allow to be considered as part of the record. And then we can proceed into deliberation on the substance of the scope that you set out at your last meeting, addressing the issues of safety and paving width on Oakley Lane.
Okay, so we've all, we've all been doing this case for a while, so I'm not going to get into nitty-gritty details about where we've been and where we're going, but I do kind of want to set the stage so that we can figure out what it is that we're talking about today, what the scope of that is, procedural and substantive. I submitted a memo to you dated a week ago, September 21st, in which I outlined the open record materials and indicated to you what at least the city attorney's opinion was about which of those documents you should consider. In that memo and in the AIS, staff also kind of gave you a summary of the procedures leading up to this. So what happened first is now going on about two years ago, the hearings official approved this application for PUD at the end of Oakley Lane. He imposed some conditions in that approval, but with regard to the safety of Oakley Lane, the hearings official determined that the proposal complied with all of the applicable approval criteria. With regard to a landscape screening criteria on the eastern boundary, the hearings official required some amount of screening on that eastern side. The Planning Commission affirmed the hearings official's decision with regard to Oakley Lane, but removed the condition requiring landscape screening on the east side. Opponents then challenged that approval to Luba. Except with regard to the landscape screening, Luba affirmed the Planning Commission's decision. Because of a procedural glitch, there was at least one neighbor who submitted written testimony to the hearings officer who did not receive notice of the hearings officer's decision or notice of the appeal hearing to the Planning Commission. The Court of Appeals, based on that, remanded the matter to the city to fix that procedural problem with regard to Simon Troutman and to allow him to testify in front of the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission then held a hearing specifically for Simon Troutman on that remand. The Planning Commission decided to open up the record to take in evidence related to an issue that was raised by Simon Troutman regarding the paving width of Oakley Lane. The Planning Commission provided an open record period in which it allowed new testimony to come in, it allowed a period for rebuttal to that testimony, to that new evidence, and then final response by the applicant. The commission has already decided the landscape screening issue, so all that's left to do for you today is to review the evidence and determine whether the applicant has satisfied its burden with regard to the approval criteria relevant to the paving issue. After you do that, you will also be going back to determine whether anything else that Simon Troutman raised causes you to change your decision. But what I'm suggesting that you do is start with that paving issue. My outline, my memo outlines the open record period. I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty details of that because it's pretty, pretty specific. If you have any questions as you go through that initial determination, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Because you opened the record for new evidence regarding the paving issue, you will need to determine whether, after considering that evidence, you still believe the approval criteria are satisfied. I suggest that initially you attempt to confine your discussion to the paving width issue and whether, based on the new evidence that you'll be looking at, any reasonable conditions you might choose to impose, you believe the applicant has satisfied its burden of demonstrating that all applicable approval criteria are satisfied. After that, you should determine whether there are any other issues that Simon Troutman raised in his July 27 written submittal that caused you to want to change your original decision from a year ago or whenever that was. So do you have any questions on how I'm suggesting you proceed?
Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, thank you. I have questions, and this is just for me, for my deliberations. So on the, whether or not the applicant has, has made their, made their case, I need to put myself in the mindset of, of that first public hearing. Is that kind of where I want to be? And the question, and the reason I bring that up is because in the, in the testimony we received at the Troutman public hearing and in the, in the subsequent open record period and stuff after that, the applicant brought up several times that Luba approved, you know, our findings. And I'm having a little bit of question, if I, if Luba approved our findings, but we didn't have all of the information—
You can adopt new findings. I mean, so the question, so with regard to the paving width issue, it's actually kind of a little bit different because you took in new evidence?
Right.
And it is, we're going to say, it's a, it was a different issue. It was a new issue that hadn't been addressed before.
Okay.
So you're not reviewing a hearings officer decision on that. You're in a very different space than what you usually are because there's no hearings officer decision on the paving width issue. You've taken in new evidence. You kind of have a clean slate.
But, but the, for me, the paving width issue goes to some of the, the errors that were brought up in the appeal—
Yes.
—as far as safety goes.
Yeah.
And so for the applicant to say, "Luba, you know, approved your findings that Oakley Lane was safe and adequate," I really shouldn't look at that because I wouldn't have seen that if Mr. Troutman had presented this information back at the first—
Right. You're not completely stuck with what Luba decided on some of those issues.
Seeing no other hands at this time, I'd like to move forward so that we make clear what new material we are considering as part of the record and as recommended in the AIS. So I am looking for, to begin discussion, I'm looking for and would entertain a motion to accept the open record material in accordance with the city's attorney's advice provided in the attached memo within the AIS. That way, we're clear on what we're looking at, which is, will be the full record as Mr. Borowski brought up. Do I have anyone to make such a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been, it's been moved by Commissioner Taylor to accept the open record material in accordance with the city attorney's advice provided in the attached memo with the IRS, AIS. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Randall. Discussion. Commissioner Borowski.
So are we just answering question one on the, on the AIS? We're not getting into the September 4th and the other request to keep open the record? Is that what this motion speaks to?
The September—
Well, there's, there were three questions on the memo.
Yes.
Is this dealing with just question one or all of it?
This is dealing with what she had recommended that we do regarding to the issues that are in that memo, which would be considering all new evidence.
All of it.
Yes. Any other commissioners have any questions? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote is five to one. That passed. As we, we now know what the record is and we're looking at also the full record, which was all prior testimony as Mr. Borowski brought up. Commissioner Borowski. As we begin our deliberations, I would like to focus our deliberations on the issues of the original motion first, to reopen the record. Specifically, the motion was to reopen the record for clarity of the right-of-way, pavement width, and parking with regard to safety on Oakway Lane. That's a quote from the thing of your last meeting. "The commission's charge is to consider all the testimony and new evidence allowed into the full record and to determine if any of that testimony or new evidence changes any of the previous findings adopted by the commission with regard to the application when the commission first heard the appeal." What I would like when you do discuss this is when discussing this new evidence and/or other prior evidence, please be as specific as possible as to what new evidence you are referring to and that, what would lead you to change the commission's previous findings. I don't know how long this is take. We'll limit our discussion to three minutes per commissioner, per round. We could have lots of rounds. And I will now begin discussion, and I'd like to recognize Commissioner Borowski first since he had made the original motion, seconded by Commissioner Baker. So with that, if you could just indicate from the new evidence, what has that done and what do you cite? Commissioner Borowski.
Oh, okay. I guess I'm put on the spot. Well, I guess I could go through my notes as to some questions that I, that arose from, from the testimony that I saw. On page 35 of the record, or of the packet, it talks to us about, well, actually, let me go to page 30 first. And that goes to the approval criteria that the right-of-way needs to be feasible. Is it feasible that we can make a safe passage to the, to the PUD? And I guess one of my questions there will be about the prescriptive easement and how that will play out in this matter, if that could be a condition of approval. I know that, that the prescriptive easement was a touchy subject at the last meeting, but I did notice that in the, the testimony submitted, the survey had a little blurb on the bottom of it about that the city may have prescriptive easement over this thing, so I think that brings it in to be fair. So that's one question I have. On page 35, it talks about the Eugene fire codes, and I was just curious as to what Eugene cities' policies are on fire code as far as access lanes and widths on other unimproved streets? How it, you know, if you get a street that isn't going to fit, match up with, with the state and the city fire codes, how the city deals with that? That was a question. On page 298, it talks of low-volume residential streets must be designed to provide a minimum of 14-foot clear lane needed for fire apparatus. I don't know how we deal with that if, in fact, the prescriptive easement is not allowed. So that would be a question that I would have as far as safety of the PUD. And then going to the other, other aspect of it, I go on to page 312, and I see a Luba approval of one of our findings that basically says that the PUD doesn't need to provide every road to it be safe, that the actual approval criteria is that the, the access within the PUD is safe and reasonable. And that's where the giving away the right-of-way, doing the hammerhead and those types of things fit in. So I'm, I'm not sure about that. And then, okay, that's fine for round one.
So that I was clear with, with what I stated, what I, what I take that you're saying, Commissioner Borowski, is from the evidence that's been provided, you feel that it wasn't addressed as to the right-of-way, the fire codes, the 14-foot clear lane, and a question with the Luba approval. I want to go at this positive to say, if you've looked at the evidence, nothing presented cleared that for you. Is that understanding what I had wanted? It wasn't clarified when it was presented. The motion was to clarify those issues. So by stating these, you're stating that it wasn't clarified for you, correct?
Yeah, when I got the, when I read, got the evidence and Mr. Troutman's testimony and the other testimony that was submitted afterwards—
Okay.
—these were questions that, that I had as far as safe and reasonable access to the PUD.
Okay.
Which was one of the things in the original appeal.
I believe I saw Commissioner Taylor.
I'm going to try to speak really quickly. One, I wanted to say, in looking through the new evidence and then back at the historical evidence in this project, or this project, I, I don't think that my decision has changed with the exception of this new evidence. And I looked very closely at the new evidence and I think it's, I, I'm glad that it was brought to our attention, and I think in order to deal with safety, it's an important thing to look at. So I want to start with the survey. And the survey is, it's done really well, so you can go all the way down the street to determine the paving width within the right-of-way, what the actual dimension of the paving width is. And it varies at the western end at 15.2 feet. And with the, throughout, as you head east, the paving width stays within the 14 feet with the exception of the eastern end. The eastern end, the paving width actually gets to 13.7 feet, which is less than the 14 feet. And now I'll explain why the 14 feet, I believe, is the critical dimension that is a dimension that's identified and adopted through a resolution and our local street plan, the arterial and collector street plan and then the local street plan. So the resolution is found on page 293, and what that resolution does is adopts the arterial and collector street plan and the local street plan. And in that, which is page 296, and I have a really slow device here, 296, I'm not going to quote it directly from because it's going to take me a while to get there, but the two, on 296, there is a definition of a low-volume street. And it talks about the low-volume street, which is less than 750 vehicles per day, and it talks about a 14 foot, 14-foot width that's acceptable as a safe method to, as, it describes it as a queuing street, as a safe method on a residential street. And if it's helpful, I can actually grab that section, or maybe staff can to read it.
Okay, so I believe the reference you made was on page 296 of the record materials we have before you. It states that low-volume residential streets, "These streets are designed for primary access to individual residential property as well as access to adjacent streets. As with the access lane, the residential environment is dominant. Traffic volumes are relatively low, 250 to 750 ADT." And the more specific, oh, sorry. I think this is what she's talking about. Okay. Going on, under the section entitled Vehicle Lanes, it speaks, it says, "On local residential streets with traffic volumes less than 750 vehicles per day, a single 14-foot traffic lane may be permitted for both directions of vehicular travel. A single traffic lane is intended to create a queuing street such that when opposing vehicles meet, one of the vehicles must yield by pulling into a vacant portion of the adjacent parking lane. This queuing effect has been found to be an effective and safe method to reduce speeds in non-local traffic."
And can you continue? There's one on 298?
Yeah.
So there's the 14 feet, and that would be a minimum width? If you go to 298, it says a minimum 14-foot clear lane is needed for a fire apparatus?
Correct.
And once again, this was approved by City Council as a resolution, and the resolution is for 608. So now I'm going to step you through, back to page 76, and it's in the Troutman testimony, and it's the 2014 Oregon Fire Code, and it talks about, there's a definition of a fire apparatus access road, and essentially that definition, I'll have to get back to that in round two.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak at this time? Commissioner Randolph, then I have Commissioner Mills.
I guess my question gets to the prescriptive easement and whether or not because of the public use, it's, the opinion that there really is one or isn't, or it's up in the air?
I'll tell you how I think it works. I don't know if you're going to get to the prescriptive easement or if you need to, but I'm going to go ahead and do it because it, it was brought up and might as well figure out how it works. So in order to get a prescriptive easement, it's, it's similar to what's called adverse possession. A person can possess a piece of property that's, that wasn't theirs by using it in a certain way for a certain period of time, and it's 10 years. You can also get an easement over a piece of property, which doesn't give you the ownership of the land, but it gives you the right to use it. The use of the land has to be open and notorious. Use of the land that belongs to another has to be adverse to the other person, and the use of it has to continue uninterrupted for a period of 10 years. So those are the elements of prescriptive easement. In this situation, the paving width is outside the dedicated right-of-way, so arguably on private property. The way a prescriptive easement works is the local government can obtain a prescriptive easement if it has paving over a certain piece of property, it's open and notorious, meets all those elements, and is continuous for a period of 10 years. So it's kind of complicated to figure out how it works because you have to go to court in order to get that determination. But that, the right in that land vests when that 10 years runs. So we don't know at this point whether there is a prescriptive right or if there isn't. We won't know that until a court decides it. But when the court decides it, and if it decides that 10 years has run and the elements are all there, it will have occurred on that date, not when the court orders it, but after that 10 years runs. So we, it could be there now, we don't know. If there, Commissioner Borowski asked a question, if there could be a condition of approval, there certainly could be. I mean, you could impose a condition of approval that said that the applicant had to, had, someone had to go get an order from a court that there's prescriptive easement over that land.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I'm going to comment on the prescriptive easement with a question to Counselor Davies, and then I have a question for staff also. In, on page 332 of the record, the applicant states, I think, let me make sure about that page number. Yeah, 321, excuse me.
321?
Yes. Second to last paragraph, the applicant states, "In fact, the evidence and record establishes that the public has acquired a prescriptive easement over and across those portions of the approved road that are located outside of the public right-of-way." Do you agree with that statement?
I'd have to look back and see what my memo said. I think it said would be, if it met those 10-year, if it met the 10-year requirement, it would be considered a prescriptive easement.
But this says it has, the public has acquired a prescriptive easement.
That's what, what's this, what am I looking at here?
Is there a specific part of page 321?
Second to last paragraph.
Second to last paragraph, first sentence.
Second to last paragraph. This is a memo from the applicant.
I understand, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay. The record establishes that the public has acquired a prescriptive easement over and across those portions of the approved road.
I'm just asking if you agree with that.
The record might at this point because Mr. Dixon put in a memo that at least attempted to address the elements of prescriptive easement. Again, so he's saying the record now does demonstrate that, whereas before it didn't necessarily. He's making an argument that it does demonstrate that that's there, but you still probably would, in order to be safe, you would want to make sure there's a court order that says there's a prescriptive easement.
Thank you. And my next question is, just, this is getting very basic, and I apologize if it's too basic. Are we, is Oakley Lane an access lane or a low-volume residential street?
Yeah, the record reflects that it's classified as low-volume residential street.
Thank you.
Any others for round one? Okay, I'd like to just put myself in the queue for round one and state a few things. The discussion that I hear on prescriptive easement is a good discussion, but to me, prescription easement is an option if we find a problem. We're still trying to look at the evidence as, do we have an issue with the right-of-way? Clearly, has any of the other evidence provided, say, it's by code that it's okay? Or do we have an issue with the amount of paving? Or do we have an issue with the amount of paving width? So I don't have a problem with prescription easement, but I'm finding that that's more of a solution if we do determine that we do have a problem, that something needs to be done, and that could be one of several options. So in this second round, I'd like to focus based on what testimony's been presented and what some of the commissioners have said. You know, what are our feelings? Any additional issues that may or may not cause you to change your mind? And has anything been said that addresses what has been raised so far? Who would like to be Commissioner Taylor on this round?
Okay, part two. So we're at the fire code now. So the fire apparatus access road is defined.
Can you take us back to where you, what page you were on?
Sorry, page 76. So the fire apparatus access road is defined. And there is a box under the definition of a fire apparatus road that says, "Specifications and standards for public streets are regulated by county or city governing bodies in accordance with ORS 368.039." So basically, within the record, and I couldn't find that ORS, but essentially unless the city's adopted less width by resolution, the 14-foot that's within the fire code has to be observed. As it says, specifications and standards for public streets are regulated by the county and city. And through Resolution 294, a fire apparatus road at 14-foot wide has been approved by the city council and it's adopted within an adopted plan. So a 14-foot fire access, fire apparatus access road is approved. So that's one, the next point. The next point I have is parking. And Paul Conte submitted correspondence via email. And that's on page 54. And I'm scrolling as fast as I can. So basically, you have to go to the very end of his email to actually see the question and how Paul Conte phrased his question. And the question is, can the owner of private property legally park his vehicle on gravel, partially on right-of-way and partially on own property, as long as the vehicle remains completely off the pavement? And the response by the parking, it's the City of Eugene parking, I forget what his title is, Travis Hargit, he's within the parking division. And he does say, and there's some description, that it would have to be removed after 72 hours, but then they can move it and come back. But that is legal. So remember, keep that in mind, that it's, as long as it's off the pavement, it's legal. So now I'm going to circle back to where I started. Is, essentially what we've got is an adopted Resolution 293 that it's a 14-foot right-of-way for a local low-volume street is safe at 14 feet wide. It accommodates fire emergency vehicles and you can legally park as long as you're not on that 14-foot width of paving. So the big question to me, quite frankly, is where along this road is it not 14 feet of paving within the right-of-way? So not the paving that's on private property. And I don't think we have to get to a prescriptive easement because essentially, if you go down, like I said, and do the math, the only portion, granted, it could vary a little, but the survey's taken four points. And the four points, three of the points, starting on the west, they all are within 14 feet. The very last point that he takes a width dimension, it is short. It's 13.7 feet. So I'm not going to make the motion now, but my motion would be that the applicant has to, at a minimum, make sure that there is 14-foot of paving along Oakley Lane. So that's all I have.
I didn't see another. Is there another hand at this time for this round? Commissioner Borowski?
Those are kind of the same issues that I, that were brought up for me when I went through these was that regardless of whether or not it's, the PUD is there or not, is this Oakley Lane, yeah, meet the city's standards as far as what is applicable? And I don't know how we get there other than, other than having a part of the approval, a condition for approval, the prescriptive easement, which would get us past that 14 feet.
Other than?
I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner.
Well, I don't, if I may correct you, from what I heard Commissioner Baker say is she said, Commissioner Taylor say that if she made a motion, the motion would be a condition of approval that would have it widened. She didn't, I don't believe, state prescriptive easement.
No, I just think that that would be a way to get, get that extra.
Other than a condition being put on the approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Randle?
I guess, and I know I brought up the prescriptive easement question to start with, more just for clarification. I think Commissioner Taylor's made some compelling arguments in my mind as far as the paving width. I guess my question would be, it seems like the only portion that appears to be less than the 14 feet is adjacent to the subject property. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
For the survey.
Survey, yeah. And I guess, my question, going back to the original site plan, and I don't have it right in front of me, were we not also requiring an additional setback or, I don't remember what that was called, if that was a setback or if that was an easement on that original site plan at the subject property?
We were requiring a right-of-way dedication.
Right-of-way dedication.
There was also setback that the commission decided, I'm not sure the specific dimension of that, but I believe it was a-
Twenty-two and a half. Twenty-two and a half, which gets us to the half of the 45-foot-
Yeah.
...right-of-way.
That is correct.
So I guess from that, based on my observation on that, it seems to me that would protect us from the standpoint of having enough width there for adequate fire access as well as adequate access. Whether we require additional paving, it seems like as part of the development, they're going to be paving that anyway.
Well, to be clear, my understanding is that they've, the requirement is for an irrevocable petition for future improvement of the street. And so if the commission chooses to require additional paving width, it would need to make a condition, essentially to add a condition to specify that.
Potentially get that from the 13.7 feet to at least 14 feet.
Right.
Okay.
Any other commissioners in this round who haven't spoken? Okay. If I may say something at this time, from what I've heard in the original charge to reopen the record, we've discussed right-of-way, pavement width, and to some degree, parking, all related to safety. Some of us have indicated what our concerns were and referenced specific areas. Others have indicated how that was addressed by code and referenced specific areas. Are we at a point where we feel that those three issues addressed are, would they cause us to change our minds on what our previous decision was? Or has there been sufficient evidence presented by the applicant that addresses all of those concerns? This is just a chance to talk, anyone is free to make a motion at any time. But we'll open a third round to take a look at that based on what we've heard and presented. If anyone wished to speak at this time? Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to back up a little bit and confirm that I was not part of the final vote on this, but I was part of the deliberation earlier and expressed serious concerns about the safety of Oakley Lane. I still have those concerns. My gut tells me it's not good. I disagree pretty strongly with some of the statements that are made, particularly in the traffic analysis provided by the applicant that says additional trips do not mean an increased hazard. I just, that to me is a nonsense statement. However, having said that, I'm finding that, you know, my gut is saying it's not safe, but I'm having a hard time finding a basis in code to say it's not safe. So in this case, my gut's going against what I'm hearing and what all the evidence and prescriptions are that I'm hearing about in terms of the 14-foot wide, low residential street to fix that Commissioner Taylor has suggested, which I think is a viable fix. So I'm torn at this moment.
Commissioner Borowski?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. I too go back to the original deliberations on this. You know, there was a lot of different errors that we were addressing and they, you know, the first portion of them, you know, so for some of you commissioners that weren't here during those deliberations, kind of got lumped in, you know, can we determine that Oakley Lane is a sufficient and safe access to the development? And a lot of it was based on the Public Works document. And what the Public Works document said, yes, we believe it's safe because there's 19 feet of paved service. And we referred back to this document several times because there was a lot of things brought up. Yes, it's safe because there's 19 feet of paved surface within the right-of-way to you. Now, we do have 19 feet of paved service, but until that easement is there, I don't see it being what the Public Works thinks that. If, if in fact, one of those property owners that has the property and the easement hasn't been done yet decides to limit access to that, then the 19 feet isn't there. And had the Public Works had a correct survey, would they have made that determination that Oakley Lane is safe based on not having 19 feet within the public right-of-way? So getting back to those earlier discussions, that was a key point and I don't know if it's changed my decision or not.
Commissioner Taylor?
As I said in the beginning, personally, I've been looking back at the record, which I did review all the original record evidence, focusing on the decisions, is that with the exception of the paving width, that I, the new evidence didn't change any of the original information that would change my decision, the planning commission's original decision. So I would like to throw out, worth a try, a motion. So with the exception of the paving width, I move that the new evidence does not change the planning commission's prior decision.
Just let, give me a second here because I want to quote it properly by Commissioner Taylor and seconded by Commissioner Nicolalow. The new evidence does not change the commission's original position?
Does not change the planning commission's prior decision. And it's important to actually add with the exception of the paving width.
With the-
Within the right-of-way, sorry.
With the exception of the paving width within the right-of-way. Commissioner Nicolalow, do you consider that to be seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we've had a motion and we have a second. I'd like to open that up to discussion. Commissioner Borowski?
So I'm not sure how this, how that motion works. You say that it doesn't change our findings, but then there's a caveat except for?
It's the new evidence. So we just received, it's actually how Ann Davies described, sorry, John.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
Ann Davies described in the answer to your question, because this is new evidence, it's almost like separate from our prior decision. So the new evidence, we were considering from the last meeting that we had, the new evidence had to do with the paving width.
Right.
So it's really, all the prior information doesn't change, or the new information does not change my prior decision. But the new information does have this new component to it, and that is the paving width. Ann, do you want to clarify that if I?
I'm struggling with the same way he is, I think. I'm, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. Maybe Gabe does.
Well, I think it means that you, your motion would in effect resolve all of the appeal issues except for the safety issue, which would need perhaps an additional motion and discussion as to the outcome. But that the remainder of the decision, except for that issue, would be reaffirmed-
Yeah.
-without additional findings.
Yeah. And maybe it doesn't need, with the exception, to add a condition or we start with the condition first and then, that's where I wasn't sure how to do it.
Well, and the reason I ask that is, because if you go back to the official, or the first, the first hearing and the list of errors that we had, you know, we had to find findings on all of those conditions and errors. And so what, which one of, you're saying all of those are approved and then are we looking at a new? We can't put in a new, a new thing where they erred, right?
Well, let me try to explain my consumental construct of this is that essentially the scope of the appeal, all of those original appeal issues are before you as a result of procedural error. And that this would essentially reaffirm the planning commission's prior decision except for the safety issue. Now, within that is, I guess, need to understand the scope of what criteria are still in play. One of those, subsection five of the PUD approval criteria is regards safe and adequate transportation systems. I think that's the focus of the discussion. In the appeal testimony, there's also issues raised with respect to, I believe it's subsection six regarding public health and safety, the risk issue. And then also what was subsection 11B regarding public improvement standards. So those would be essentially the three criteria that are still in play regarding the safety issue which you reopen the record for.
Okay. So-
It's a good point.
Yeah. So in that case, for me, the safe and adequate, we talked about that a lot in the first round. And it's not what we, what our findings were and what was actually affirmed by Lubo was that the PUD doesn't need to make sure, doesn't need to provide safe and adequate all the way to River Road. That's kind of what our commission came through. It needs, the conditions of approval and the way it looks on the record is that it needs to have a safe and adequate transportation system within it. I think what we need, what, the one that will be applicable to the new evidence that came in is the health and safety, which is the number six. Because can, can we guarantee that this new development will be safe for the people that are living there? Okay? And for me, the way that that happens is by making sure there is a 14-foot paved lane for fire apparatus to get to the new PUD. And however we get there, that for me has to be obtained. Otherwise, the safety of those people- Otherwise, the safety of those people in the new PUD cannot be guaranteed, and I think that would be in sections, in number six of the, of the appeal.
And just for the record, we staff just passed around a copy of the PUD approval criteria that were in effect at the time of this original decision, so.
Actually, I just, this is numbered differently.
All right. So, anyway, you have those criteria in front of you if you need it for reference.
Any other, any other, Commissioner Randall?
I guess, the way I'm seeing the motion and, and the issue really is, I think, back to, similar to what Commissioner Borowski was saying, at the 14-foot, I think there's a lot of compelling evidence in the record and in city standards and codes that make me think the 14-foot is the, is the width, is what's needed for safety, for fire, for all of those. You've got low-volume residential street with traffic volumes between 250 and 750 ADT, and in the record, we were, I think, in the middle of that, in the 380 range, I think, with the new subdivision somewhere in there, but well within that range. So, it qualifies as a low-volume residential street. The vehicle lanes where it's listed there, that on local residential streets with traffic volumes less than 750 vehicles per day, a single 14-foot traffic lane may be permitted for both directions of vehicular travel. And so, I think those resolutions and that what has been adopted by city council is enough evidence for me that, you know, I think we can't, you know, go beyond that unless there's other criteria or other evidence that we have that shows that it's not safe for some other reason, and I don't see that anywhere in the record. And so, I'm leaning toward, you know, agreeing with the motion. I think the 14-foot width is a critical dimension because of that, but I think that can be dealt with, maybe with a different motion or then.
Commissioner Nicolao. Nicolao, sorry.
Last one.
It sticks in my tongue here.
Yeah, in regards to the 14-foot lane, I mean, we've seen referral comments from public work staff that state for unimproved local streets in the River Road area, i.e. streets that lack sidewalks and have not been striped to identify dedicated travel lanes. The expectation is that pedestrians and bicyclists will share the paved surface with vehicles. And we've seen in the public works report that Oakley Lane was not unsafe for bicyclists and pedestrians in the current form, and moreover, the public work staff did say that there's a tendency on dead-end streets such as Oakley Lane for motorists to travel at slower or more cautious speeds because of the perceived narrowness of the streets, and this would be achieved with a 14-foot lane. That also being said, I agree with Commissioner Taylor's motion, and I would say that really what it comes down to is that we need to require the applicant to improve the paving on Oakley Lane to the minimum 14 feet, and make sure that this is done prior to the final occupancy of those dwellings, and then the applicant shall do and achieve the necessary permits to make that happen. And at that point, I believe, once we do add in that condition of approval for them to meet the paving width, which is our primary concern here, then they will have found compliance with our approval criteria. And so, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Any commissioners who haven't spoken? I'll put myself in the queue for a second here. I also am troubled with this, as was Commissioner Mills. However, when I looked at all the various codes and resolutions that were out there, I came to a similar conclusion that, you know, if the street was indeed unsafe by the people's feelings, it was unsafe even if there was a PUD built or not built. It's the same street. And that, from what I understand and looking at the codes, a new PUD is responsible for its immediate area and its adjacent area that abuts that street and not the entire length of the street, unless there's a dramatic increase, which would trigger a TIA and would, might lead to something of improvement so needed. That's not the case here. So, my inclination would be to go, you know, with this motion as presented, and then potentially, if we did, and when we have a vote on it, proceed with the second thing that might clarify that right-of-way issue as a condition. We'll start another round on this if anyone else has, wants to speak. Commissioner Borowski.
All right, just a question to Ann. Do you think that's the cleanest way of doing that, of passing her motion the way it's stated?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. My preference would have been to clarify the paving width first.
Right.
And then to go, I think that's a little cleaner.
That's kind of what I was thinking, too. But, and, and the reason I'm saying that is because we've seen in this record how, when we make motions, they can be construed different ways. And so, I mean, at our last meeting and in this record, there was, there was questions about a motion made by this body, and it was, it was read two different ways. And so, I just want to make sure that we make the motion as clearly and succinctly as we can so that there isn't questions on it going further.
I have no, no problem with that. I also don't have any problems with two clearly distinct motions, but however, Commissioner Taylor is in the-
I am going to withdraw my initial motion, and I am going to make another motion, and it will sound very familiar to you. The applicant shall improve the paving in areas less than 14 feet within the right-of-way along Oakley Lane. Prior to final occupancy of any dwellings, the applicant shall obtain any necessary permits.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Nicolao seconds that motion. Discussion on that motion, Commissioner Randall.
Just a question, would that be the entire length of Oakley Lane to River Road, where it might be less than 14 feet?
Yes, so they have to pave at a minimum of 14 feet.
Commissioner Borowski.
And you'll have to excuse me because I'm not-
Within the right-of-way.
I'm not, I'm not an architect, so I have harder time reading, reading these types of surveys and stuff like that. Just a question for the maker of the motion, if, if the applicant could satisfy that paving width by getting a prescriptive easement, because I don't know if part of this is outside of their, they can't pave somebody else's property.
No, it's, it's within the right-of-way, so there's 20-foot right-of-way, and if you look at the survey.
That's what I'm saying, I'm having a hard time.
The eastern, one section of the road has additional footage, six or-
So, you're saying that by, by reading this, there's nowhere outside of the applicant's property that it's less than 14 feet? Because what I, from the record and just reading it and not being able to decipher this quite as well as, as professionals, I thought that there was areas outside of the applicant's property or control that brought it less than 14 feet.
So, you want me to, I, so the, the way the survey, the survey, if you look at the survey, the paving, so, for instance, if you go to the east, easternmost side, the paving width is 19.9 feet-
Right.
Of AC paving.
Right.
But if you notice, there's a portion of it that's outside of the right-of-way. The right-of-way is 20 feet, and then there's a little tiny itty-bitty note here with two arrows that says 6.2 feet of AC paving is outside of the dedicated right-of-way.
Right.
So, you take 19.9 minus the 6.2 that sits outside of the right-of-way.
Okay.
And you get a total of 13.7 paving within the 20-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
So, essentially, you still have 16 point-
Okay. So, so what, so what you're saying is that, that's the only, the only area that's under 14 is that easternmost end?
Yeah, but I'm leaving the condition, I mean, really how I proposed the condition was, was more main, basically, that they have the burden to go along Oakley Lane to provide that minimum 14 feet, which is what is the approved safe-
Right.
-lane width, that that's all along 14 feet minimum paving within the right-of-way.
Right.
I had someone here before you, Commissioner Nicolao, I forget who it was, Mills, Commissioner Mills.
My question is answered.
Commissioner Nicolao.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of Commissioner Taylor, I think that, I know that we've been discussing prescriptive easements and other, and other things, but the thing is, is that those are solutions, and for us, as I understand it, in, under our purview and staff, please correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken here, we are supposed to place the proper conditions in order for the 14 feet to be met along the entire length of Oakley Lane, but we are not required to provide solutions like prescriptive easements or things like that. That would be up to the applicant to pursue themselves, correct?
Well, I think, as discussed earlier, it would potentially be within the discretion of the commission to add a condition about the prescriptive easement. Based on the discussion I've heard so far, that could be added as an alternative means to resolving the paving width issue, but I would, I would suggest that if it is added, that it is, you know, a choice that the applicant could undertake as far as more than one solution, given, you know, the uncertainty or the cost and time issues in regards to a court decision on that. It would seem to me that, that the applicant has certainly more control over, you know, the paving width within the existing right-of-way.
That's, okay, so, as I understand it, even if that is technically not resting outside of our purview, perhaps is ill-advised and goes beyond what we are legally required to do? Is that an-
Yes.
Understanding? Okay, thank you.
Before we start a second round, any other commissioners want to speak? Let me just say something. On this particular motion, and I tried to write it down real fast, it began with the I think somewhere we should be saying whether or not this is a condition of approval, because I don't understand how the motion stands on its own.
Yeah.
So, but just a comment, now with that, Commissioner Borowski.
Right, Ann, can you read the motion to me again, please?
Boy, if I didn't get the last part.
I can get it.
I just got 90% of it. Go ahead.
So, as a, as a condition of approval, and I'm not sure if I can do a friendly amendment right now to just add that, but as a condition of approval, the condition would be, the applicant shall improve the paving width in Oakley Lane a minimum of 14 feet in the areas less than 14 feet within the right-of-way. Prior to final occupancy of any dwellings, the applicant shall obtain any necessary permits. So that I can see staff could flip-flop.
See, and I, I could be for this motion if it were to say that the applicant would assure a 14-foot paved right-of-way the, the entire length of Oakley Lane, so that, you know, instead of, it does except for, hers says shall pave.
Shall improve.
Shall improve. It may not need to be improved, there, it may just need to be, you know, they may choose to do it through a prescriptive easement or something like that. That's why I'm saying, just, for me to get there, I have to be assured that there's a 14-foot paved right-of-way to the, now, whether or not they have to pave it or not.
I think that's it.
I, I do think that Commissioner Borowski has a point in regards to the clarity of the wording, and that I might suggest that you should be specific about paving as the means of improving. So, in other words, if it's ambiguous as to what the improvement needs to be, you should be more specific.
Okay.
That'd be staff's recommendation.
And the way, the way maybe to put that, in order to meet cities' street criteria, the applicant must assure that there is a 14-foot paved access, the full length of Oakley Lane, to the PUD.
In the right-of-way.
Yeah, within the right-of-
Commissioner Nicolao.
I apologize, I understand I'm going twice in one round. I just want to clarify really fast on, part of the motion said, sorry, as I try and switch around all my documents on here, did you say that that had to be met prior to final occupancy, if I understand correctly? I just want to make sure that that is appropriate with the standards. On page 13 of Mr. Troutman's original appeal testimony, it says that there is a legal precedent to adopt findings that establishing the fulfillment of the condition of approval is not precluded as a matter of law, and that local governments must ensure and impose in the condition of approval that the conditional will be fulfilled prior to finer, prior to final development approvals or actual development. And so, I just want to double-check that the proposed condition of approval does meet those required standards, because I see here that you have an option of final development approval or actual development.
Occupancy permit will, will get you there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
So, with the discussion that, that we've had, I don't know that we need to recraft the motion. I think what I might suggest, if it pleases the commission, is that staff can take the wording proposed and also help to create a finding that leads to the condition of approval that you would include in a final order. We would bring that back for the next meeting on October 5th and do our best to make that condition as clear and objective as possible, that being, you know, I think, a key goal of staff so that, on the event of future challenge, and so the applicant and all the parties understand when it's met and how it's met, that there wouldn't be dispute over that, so.
So, as, as part of that, just to piggyback, it'd be important to clarify whether you, as a body, agree about there being potentially more than one way of solving that issue. The motion on the table is a particular solution. I haven't heard you decide whether or not you're in support of looking at that a little more broadly or not. The more broad it gets, the more we need to wordsmith, to make sure it's clear and objective and achieves kind of that goal if, if we're not going to be as specific about the solution. So, there's a little bit of time I think we should take to make sure that that's kind of a legally correct kind of condition that we draft. If it's prescriptive, as the motion is now, it's a little easier to define that here and now. So, the question for you is, do you want to keep that a little more broad and allow more than one solution potentially? I'll put myself in the queue. I would be uncomfortable for allowing more than one solution if we don't suggest what those alternative solutions are, personally. I think we're talking about the paving width and meeting safety standards, so it's pretty specific that what I, voting on this, would want. Commissioner Randall.
And I would agree with that. I think, from my perspective, this is the simplest solution, and usually the simplest solution is the best. And to add another condition or another option, I think, just muddies the waters. And I think by requiring the 14-foot paving width, I think we meet those clear and objective standards that comply with what city council has already adopted as far as resolutions, so that would be my inclination.
Commissioner Taylor.
Ann, I could go either way. I do want to, if we are going to, we'll leave the existing motion on the table. I, I do think that we should still have staff take a look at this condition and actually make sure that it's written, well, yeah.
Clear and objective.
Clear and objective, yes.
Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, and I think if you look at what was passed out here, and you look at approval criteria number seven, adequate public facility and services are available to the site, or if public services and facilities are not presently available, the applicant demonstrate that the services and facilities will be available prior to need. I think that's exactly what we're talking about here.
Well-
That those, that, that the adequate services and facilities that we're talking about is a 14-foot paved right-of-way.
Let me just clarify, I don't, I don't believe that criterion seven is invoked as part of the appeal, and so you'd be introducing that as a new basis for-
Yeah.
... the condition.
Well, it, it, by proxy from six, so. Well, it, by proxy from six, so. Six was brought in and said, is there a significant risk to public health? And the way you get to alleviate that risk, in my view, is by having 14 feet of pavement.
I believe that's what the motion states. Any other questions or comments or discussion on the motion? Are we ready to vote on this motion? Might be difficult to restate this motion. Staff had indicated that it's got the basis of what we had indicated and some really strong, not-
I thought, we're not going to vote on the motion, they were going to craft it and bring it back, is what I understood.
I think we should vote on something and-
To direct us.
To direct them to do that by voting on it.
That's different than what you stated.
Okay. So I'm going to withdraw yet another motion. Maybe I should practice developing motions. And maybe I shouldn't be the one to throw this motion out. Third time's a charm. Yeah, third time's a charm. Thanks for your trust. So, I would like to move to direct staff to develop a condition that essentially has the applicant responsible for improving the paving width in Oakley, a minimum of 14 feet in the areas less than 14 feet within the right-of-way prior to final occupancy of any dwellings.
Is there a second to that?
Seconded by Commissioner Randall.
Do we have any further discussion on that new motion? Okay, we're going to take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by a raise of hands. Opposed? So we have five, four, and one abstention. I have a comment I'd like to ask staff. This is a condition, you know, of approval. Do we need to state anything where we reaffirm our original decisions with this condition?
I would.
You would?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking for something that will reaffirm all of our prior findings and what we approved as our, and this is just a new condition, correct?
Yeah, we're probably going to want to adopt some supplemental findings that get us to that condition.
That's for next week, but I'm just saying for today, so that we can say we finished it, so it isn't reopened next week. Are we finished now? We're willing to say all of our other findings? We reendorse and reaffirm all our other findings with just this condition?
Which, where is this, which finding is this amending?
It isn't amending any of them. We're reaffirming, I'm looking for something to reaffirm all of our prior findings, but adding, based on the new evidence, this new condition. That's the only thing, that's how I think it is. Staff, am I correct in that legal?
I think you're going to, and maybe I'm jumping ahead, I think what you need to say is you need to say, we're going to reaffirm the decision, but we're probably also going to be adopting some supplemental findings-
Yes.
-that address the new evidence.
The new condition?
Yeah.
Yes. But we need something to that effect.
Yes.
But we need to see what those findings are. For me, I would-
We will be bringing that back.
Be next week.
Yes, and that's why I'm saying, I think that that, the motion that you're looking for would be more appropriate after we've seen what these, the people have put out there. And it can happen then.
Well, all, I just don't want to cause an issue where we meet next week, I won't be here next week, by the way, and be Commissioner Taylor, but the issue is, is I don't want to have next week where we look at the new findings and the condition, and then we open up a whole new debate on all of, everything that's original. I'd like to get rid of that today. If we agree that what we had said prior, we were reaffirming with this being the condition with whatever findings it has, I'd like to get that out of the way today, so that we're not opening something up next week again. Commissioner Taylor.
So I would like to make a motion that, to direct staff to look at the relevant supplemental findings from the condition that you're also going to be looking at. And that the Planning Commission reaffirms the prior decision with the exception of, or in addition of the supplemental findings.
For the new condition?
For the new condition. That's a really wordy.
Do I have a second to that?
I will second.
Yeah.
But I would like to ask staff, does that motion make sense and is it clear?
That's a good question.
Just to double-check.
Clear enough for me.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Randall.
And I guess, just to circle back around, and I go back to Commissioner Taylor's initial comments about the new testimony and the new information that has come before us, I think from my perspective, none of that new testimony has changed my view or idea of the decision that we made initially, with the exception of the addressing the 14-foot paving width. And so, assuming that we're addressing that 14-foot paving width, I'm now comfortable with reaffirming our original decision. And so I think, and I think that's what we've directed staff.
Right, and forgive me for inserting this as part of your discussion on this particular motion, but just as a reminder, you did take action to direct staff to craft a condition regarding the landscape issue. I have some language for that draft condition. Time permitting, we could pass that around and have you take a look, or we can simply put it in the revised final order with supplemental findings to come back next week, so.
Okay, well, Commissioner Borowski.
So I'm not okay with the last motion. And the reason that I'm not okay with it is because I believe that there may be an appropriate position in our original findings for us to amend, and I would have to go through all of the, what was it, nine or 11 areas where we had findings, that this may be an appropriate place to place that. Okay, so when it came to the safety and the findings that we had on approval criteria number six, that may be the appropriate place to put this finding and amend that findings. So I can't approve that at this meeting until I see what the staff and the city attorney brings us back as far as what our recommendations are.
Okay, if I might at this point, could staff comment on that? Is that, would you go back and amend an initial finding to reinsert a new condition, or would it be a standalone?
No, we, well, Anne-
That's a good question.
I think that we would need to tie the supplemental findings and condition to a particular criterion of approval. As I stated earlier, I believe there are three where this issue would be relevant, and I might suggest initially that we can amend the findings under each of those three criteria to lead toward the conclusion that a condition of approval is needed for the 14-foot minimum paving width.
Okay.
So it would be, under those three criteria, that we would amend the findings to basically clarify that the commission's decision has changed with respect to that.
And that, again, for me, that goes back to defendability of these. Because if we approve a finding that doesn't have what we said in it, in each one of those categories, we're opening it up to say, well, wait a second, this finding isn't defendable because they didn't put in the public safety part of it. So that's why I don't feel comfortable affirming it until we see the actual motion.
Okay, well, staff has indicated they're going to do it that way, but if you're still-
Well, that's why I'm saying I would vote against this motion.
Yeah, I understand. Commissioner Taylor.
You know, actually, some of the purpose of the motion is just to get language out there. So I'm more than willing, because I have the same concern that you do, and Commissioner Nicolao, I mean, the main question is that I want to make sure that the motion makes sense. And essentially, Gabe, what you just said is essentially what the motion is intended to do. Can I?
The motion is to direct staff to go back and-
Yeah.
-create those findings and condition, and so we'll be bringing that back on Monday-
Yeah.
-for a final vote. So there will be an opportunity for you to take issue or suggest amendments to the wording if need be at that time.
I mean, the main purpose of the motion is really to achieve what Commissioner Jaworski was highlighting, is that the discussion is really around the amended decision relevant to the supplementing findings that are connected to the condition. But aside from that-
Right.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, should I throw out?
All I want to do is clarify that when you're saying we're reaffirming a decision, you're saying we're reaffirming the approval, not reaffirming all of the findings.
Yes, it's reaffirming the decision.
I think you have the same misunderstanding that I did.
Yeah.
Where it's like, we're not reaffirming the, you know, the decision itself, the piece of paper, but we're reaffirming the approval. So let's make that clear, that that's the understanding of everyone here.
And that's what I said in the, because I wrote it, but that's what I said, is that it is reaffirming the decision. It's approved.
Do I see any other commissioners?
Good clarification.
I originally read what the motion was the same way the attorney did. I felt that you cannot have conflicting findings. So if we're reaffirming our initial findings with this condition, the condition is going to change some of those initial findings. It's just the ones that it doesn't change, we're reaffirming. So having said that, is there any other people, any other commissioners that have a question? I'm going to call for a vote on the motion then. Would you restate the motion, please?
Oh, you know, I didn't get all of it in there, actually. Gabe, did you write down what I said?
I didn't get all of it.
Okay.
I'm going to go back and watch the webcast.
Well, my motion is to direct staff to develop supplemental findings based on the condition that you're also going to be developing or wordsmithing for clear and objective standards regarding the minimum 14-foot pavement width within the right-of-way. To amend the appropriate findings of the original decision. But the Planning Commission reaffirms Planning Commission's prior decision approval. Now, it's wordy, and it's not exactly like the first one, but it's-
Do you have a second on that? Agree?
Commissioner-
Yes.
Nicolao, would you go along with the phrasing of this motion as it is, to basically direct staff to look at the relevant supplemental findings and reaffirm our prior decision with understanding that we have placed a new condition on this that will have its own findings?
Yes, and I did write that motion down exactly, so do we need to restate it just really fast, or?
Yeah, great. Good type.
You can wordsmith it if I-
Yeah, I would feel-
Because I kind of rambled. So you, I know that you have some type-
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable restating it and just making sure that we all are good about the wording of this motion before I second. So as I have it written down, the motion is to direct staff to find supplemental findings based on the condition that you will also be wordsmithing for objective standards regarding the 14-foot pavement in the right-of-way to amend the appropriate findings of the original decision, but the Planning Commission reaffirms the Planning Commission's prior decision approval. I would also like to state that it is a gigantic wrong sentence.
And it's, period. No but.
My mother is an English teacher, and she would be ashamed.
I know.
But yes, does everybody feel comfortable with the wording of that, and does it make sense, most importantly?
Okay. We'll take a vote on that. All in favor of that motion? We have four opposed, one, and one abstention. So that clears up this particular issue until next week, when this will be brought back in a final form for you to look at. As indicated by staff, since we have some time, they have, if you would like to, to get a draft of a prior decision, Gabe, at another meeting which dealt with the screening. God, I got, I got, I can't. We'll just take a minute or two to take a look at this, and maybe if staff wanted to highlight something that's in here, or?
Sure, so at our last meeting, you discussed and provided staff with some direction on the landscape condition. I've provided you is a draft of language that would go into the final order, your decision on remand. Essentially, what it does is strikes the last sentence of the prior condition of approval, 15, which stated that additional landscape screening is not required along the eastern property boundary. We decided that it will be required. And so what the condition of approval states, it would be an added condition, number 16, that says, "Final PUD plans shall show landscape screening along the eastern property boundary compliant with the landscape standards at EC 9.6200." More specifically, the landscaping shall be located on the subject property outside, along the west boundary of the existing public utility easement. Needs to be a minimum of seven feet in width and comply with the low-screen L2 landscape standard at EC 9.6210 subsection 2 for the portion to the south of building four, beginning at its southeast corner. It also has to comply with either the high-screen landscape standard, L3, at Eugene Code 9.6210 sub-3, or the partial-screen fence standard, L5, at 9.6210 subsection 5. And this is for the portion directly adjacent and north of building four, at its, beginning at its southeast corner. Some additional clarification that would go into the condition is that a 10-foot wide opening is allowed, but not required, for the pathway connection to the east, as shown on the applicant's tentative plans near the southeast corner of the subject property. At the northeast corner of the property, the landscape screening shall terminate at the edge of the required right-of-way dedication for Oakley Lane. I think we've captured all the specific exceptions and details of your, basically a customized condition for the east property boundary.
As I understand this, we don't need to take any motions on this. This is just to give us some information, and this will be coming to us next week as part of the total packet for both.
Right. If there were any interest in amending it further or wordsmithing based on what you see, we'd love to have that direction, but otherwise, we'll put it into the final order as it reads currently.
Commissioner Borowski.
Have you shown this to the applicant, and do they, is it something that they can live with?
The record's closed, so no, we haven't shared it with the applicant at this time. We need the commission's direction and decision on it. So I don't know that there's really procedurally an opportunity for us to run it past them, so to speak. What we have looked at, though, is the commission's prior concern about the width issue and the feasibility of moving the buildings to accommodate that landscaping. And the way this is crafted, it's specific to require the full seven foot of width for L2, where they have the room. There is not a minimum dimension established for the L3 or L5. In effect, what that means is that they could do a fence within the area along there, and that we do believe that it's feasible to accommodate with the narrowness at that location.
Any other commissioners have any questions at this time? Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff, do you have anything?
Nothing further, Anne?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Borowski.
So, assuming that on October 5th, we approve the condition of approval with the findings, where does that leave the process as far as appealing? I mean, I know, does it start all over again?
Yes, so you're basically adopting a land use decision that is appealable to Luba.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Other commissioners at this time? All right, then, I'd like to go on to agenda item number three, items from commissioners and staff. And I want to thank everyone, it was a pretty good discussion we had there on those particular items. Are there any other items from staff at this time? Any other items from the commissioner? Commissioner Baroski.
Anything that we should be looking for that's going in front of council over the next month that has to do with planning, commission decisions, or-
Looking out at the next month.
Thank you.
Those of you who may be interested in the Moving Ahead project, so, there's a joint meeting with LTD Board this evening to look at the corridor screening, so advancing, I believe, four different corridors for further study. So, might want to catch that if you're interested. The action on that item will be on October 12th, and that pretty much takes care of it, well, actually, no, October 21st, so the South Balamas Special Area Zone Council update, it was rescheduled from October 12th to October 21st. So, that meeting is now on the 21st. We have the public hearing for that also pushed out to November 9th, and the action item is not yet scheduled.
Thank you.
So, that's it, that's it. Actually, much lighter council agenda for planning-related items for now, but of course, there will be definitely more later.
Commissioner Randall.
And I think also tomorrow is the Community Design Handbook Open House at Bassett Tykeson at 4:30 to 6:30.
Thank you, without reminder.
Do I hear anything else? We have a thing here called learning. How are we doing? Sometimes when we have deliberations on a quasi-digital item for a whole meeting, it's kind of interesting, but maybe we can even refer to that, to, does anybody have any comments on how are we doing? I guess the only comment I would have is, we should practice on making some brevity in our motions sometimes.
I'll tell you all this about.
And sometimes, which is why I initially suggested, sometimes when you make a long motion that's comprehensive, I sometimes prefer two simplistic motions which say the same thing, and they're more concrete. That's just me. All right, do I have anything else from anyone? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, seconded. You are so adjourned.